So, like I thought this is a perfect opportunity to bring that up to you guys. When I talked to Mr. Haney again today, I again had a conversation. But I'm also been told that I should bring it up to a wider audience because I don't know if these conversations are going far at all. Or even, even, you know, coming to a wider audience. So, um, he reassured me that all the staff does have like knowledge about Ramadan and that they should be like apprised of the situation and that shouldn't have happened. So he basically said that he would investigate it, but he thinks that it was like a substitute or something. But she told me that that was not the case when I spoke with her. She said this is somebody that's been there all the time. So, that's kind of a concerning thing, you know, to me in addition. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other visitor statements? So I'll just ask everyone again, if you want follow-up, please make sure that Mr. Carney in the back of the room there has the correct information and then somebody on the administration will follow up with you individually.
I'll do it personally.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so thank you, we appreciate it.
So, just to be clear, that was the vis-- Shaun on the other side of the.
We don't have any other visitors unless.
Okay. Okay, so you're absolutely more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Um, if we're just gonna go on with our regularly scheduled meeting, um, and you're more than welcome to stay. We have student presentation, I believe, and.
I think student council is gonna give their gifts first.
Okay, great.
Hello, everyone. We're here on behalf of student council. We just have a couple of thank you gifts to give to the school board on behalf of the student body uh, for all of the great things you've all done for us.
Um, in this package, you'll find a leather-bound book and a handwritten note. We've also prepared a handwritten note for Dr. Twardel and Dr. Cusable. We are glad we are finally able to present these. This is long overdue and we just want to say a big thank you for everything you do for our school.
Thank you so much.
So first.
Do you want to make presents like?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Presentations are what?
Yeah, okay, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Please thank student council for. So Boil, dry shine. Here, let's go.
All right, so our March meeting, um, just waiting here. There we go. So we are really in the thick of it right now. Um, week leading up to spring break, we're almost there. Um, students are really excited, obviously, for a much well-deserved break. It's been quite a few weeks. I was joking with people today that I feel like we went through three seasons over this weekend, really. The thunderstorms, the summer weather, and then the snow. So, um, just hanging in there for one more week. So here we go. Our big community event that we hosted, uh, that student council put on, obviously, was our Winter Fest Dance. The last week on the twenty-fourth of, or excuse me, the twenty-second of, uh, February, where we hosted the Winter Fest Dance for all of our students and students to come together. Um, as you all know, we do these spirit days that lead up to the Winter Fest Dance as well. Um, just like we had for homecoming, we had a record turnout for those spirit days, right? So kudos to student council who really pulled the school to better understand what type of spirit days students really want. Um, and it shows because every single day of that spirit week, we have countless students coming out um, and showcasing that Stevenson spirit and following along with all the spirit days. So this is just a great community event for everybody within the Stevenson community to come together, have that Winter Fest dance. Um, and it's that something to look forward through as you kind of grind out that month of February. A lot of five-day weeks, cold weather. Uh, this is something that Stevenson looks forward to every single year. Career and academic, um, a lot of our academic and co-curricular-based clubs have just been really busy lately. On the bottom left, our Science Olympia team coached by Ryan Cora brought home the fifth-place trophy at an international, at a national tournament, excuse me, in Ohio. Um, so they have just been crazily busy with a lot of different regional tournaments, state as well as national tournaments, and they send so many kids who are on the Science Olympia team to them every single tournament that they go to. So credit to them, right? These are students who obviously have a deep passion for science. They want to be able to perform and compete in science-based events. um, and compete in science-based events, and the Stevenson Science Olympia team gives them that opportunity. On the bottom right, our ACES, which is the Academic Challenge for Engineering and Science, competed at a regional tournament at Grayslake and competed and got first place. That was at CLC. So both of those are science-related and academic, uh, clubs. On the top left, we had our congressional and public forum debate teams compete at the University of Pennsylvania, UPenn's National Tournament. Um, and they actually closed out the season this past weekend at the Illinois IDC varsity tournament as well. So that will come to a close for our very long debate tournament season. Like I've said numerous times, we've had over two hundred freshmen that tried out for that team. Countless freshmen were able to participate throughout the course of that year. Um, the debate team is thriving. The debate sponsor right here next to me. The debate team is absolutely thriving, and it's just so nice to see. I've been on it for now four years. Seeing that development, seeing so many freshmen come in every single year.
You're breaking news.
Makes that community better and better.
Should I share it?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so the congressional debate team, we have congressional and, as Rajan said, public forum. And the congressional debate team, for the first time, two weeks ago, in the state championship in JV and novice debate, took both first and second place in each event. Then, this past weekend, at the varsity level, they repeated that. They took first and second in the state in varsity as well.
And then, then on the top right, myself, as along with seven others on our varsity mock trial team, had a regional tournament up at the McHenry County Courthouse a couple of weeks ago where we took home first place. We had state this weekend as well down at Springfield, and we placed within the top ten once again. So it was a very long weekend. We didn't get back to close to like eleven-thirty last night, so we're tired, but, uh, that was just so fun. All of us that were on that team, it's been a long, long season. Trying this case back and forth and just being able to go down there with state. There were other fifty-two other teams that competed against us, so just a huge turnout down there. Continuing off of that, uh, we had our Latin club on the bottom left travel to Skokie for a Latin competition where we had twenty-nine students compete at that, where they finished fifth place overall. So that's an extension of the classroom where many students take Latin as a class here at Stevenson and then are then able to compete against other students to sort of practice what they're learning in the classroom. Um, and it's got a tight-knit community of JV, varsity, and freshmen who really love to take place in that. On the top right, our chess team delivered an outstanding performance at the championship in Peroria, um, bringing home a second-place finish out of a hundred and twenty-eight competing teams. So, huge credit to them. That is a co-ed team as well that's recognized by the IHSA. Um, so we sent so many students down there to compete at that. On the bottom right, our psychology club hosted a Brain B competition or participated in a Brain B competition at DePaul's Lincoln Park campus, and so Psychology Club is not really a competitive club per se, but this is one of their major competitive events that they have once a year. Um, and it's really nice for students who take psychology, whether that be college prep or AP, to be able to apply a lot of the skills that they're learning in the classroom um, against other like-minded students across the, uh, the state. And on the top left, our Model United Nations team traveled to DC for a national tournament. And so they were in the halls of Congress, they were moving around, right? They were getting to put on what a model United Nations looked like, um, with other nationally-recognized students. And so with a lot of these state and national tournaments, right, a lot of students like these because they're able to connect with peers from all across different areas and share their love for their passion with other people, right? Um, a lot of students have stories where they're able to come back and say that they've ever been able to get like networking opportunities or internships from these events because professionals are at these events where they go to them, um, and they're able to network right then and there. So it's just really nice, experiential. They're out there in the community um, and representing Stevenson very, very well along the way. Fine Arts has been incredibly busy this past couple of, uh, weeks. We had the freshmen play, the freshman and sophomore play, The Lion, The Witch, and The Wardrobe on the bottom left. So once again, students who take part in the plays, um, huge credit to them because it takes a lot of work on their part, right? In addition to a very rigorous course load that many of them take, they're memorizing their lines, they're practicing, they're, they're rehearsing almost every single day in preparation for that. And it's usually a multi-day performance. It's usually a Friday, a Saturday, and a Sunday. So their whole weekend goes to doing that. But they're able to build such a great sense of community amongst themselves. They share that love for acting, and it shows every single time one of their performances. You just can't believe that this is a high school performance that's taking place. On the top middle, we had many students of our dance department who take dance classes here travel to New York City over the holiday break where they had kind of a workshop. So they, they participated in dance classes, they attended a performance on Broadway, um, and they did tourist activities and were able to connect with dance professionals in Broadway. So again, with that experiential learning element of things, here's dance that we're learning here at Stevenson in the classroom. Here's how it applies into real careers, into the real world. Um, and what better place to do it than Broadway? So they loved being able to do that. We've had a handful of concerts, right, orchestra, band. It's just, I feel like every week almost we have a concert at some point. There's more to come after the break. But these are students who obviously have a deep passion for band, who have a deep passion for orchestra and choir. Um, and they really want to be able to perform at that high level, and so we thank you all for giving us the, that opportunity to be able to do that. In the athletic world, um, we wrapped up our intermural, our intramural basketball championship first, and so that's for every single grade level where every grade is able to compete with, uh, many teams amongst themselves for an IM-style basketball co- uh, competition. And so that's really nice for students who may not want to play basketball for the competitive side of things, or who want to be able to stay active during the winter months. They're able to do it with their friends, they're able to build community that way. Um, you'll have teams of like ten go up against other teams of ten, those, they'll hit it off bracket style. Um, and then every single grade level gets a great champion in IM basketball as well. So we're just really fortunate to have so many intramural, um, extracurricular opportunities within athletics for our students to participate in. And the top right, we had our boys swimming and dive team who competed at the North Suburban Conference Championship and finished in first place, taking both the regular season and the championship win with four hundred and two points. They then traveled down to Westmont for the state finals, securing a sixth-place finish overall. Congratulations. That'll be a tribute to you all. And then on the top left, our pickleball's competitive team challenged eighteen teams at a pickleball tournament in Palatine. And so pickleball has been the craze. So many students absolutely love pickleball. Um, I know, I think I may have reported back on this, but during the National Honor Society's Give-a-Thon element in November, pickleball team actually was able to do a fundraising event for that. So they brought so many students to compete in pickleball, they charged a little bit of a fee, and then that fee went to the Give-a-Thon purpose. And so they were able to leverage their numbers, right? They've got hundreds of students who have tried out and now participate in the pickleball program. They were able to leverage that to bring a strong community support for Give-a-Thon. I was talking to their sponsor, their coach, a couple of weeks ago, who told me that they really have been able to do a competitive and a non-competitive team, so they haven't had to make as many cuts. Um, and you'll get students who have never picked up a pickleball racket to students who've been competing in pickleball since, you know, pickleball, I feel, has become that craze nationwide. And so it's just really nice that we're able to have that opportunity for students to be able to compete both competitively and also for fun with their friends. During pickleball, it's co-ed as well, so you're, you're getting community everywhere you go. All right, well, I wanted to end on community as well because there's just been so much more. We started with it, we're gonna end with it as well. Um, on the bottom, uh, the entire bottom, the left, middle, and the right, the Black Student Union hosted its Black History Month event. They did a Peach Cobbler event that's on the bottom left. They had Operation Black History Month, which rounded out the Black History Month celebrations. And then on the bottom right, they had a guest speaker event as well. So with all of these events, it'll also be the subject of the article that I hand you in a moment here. They're able to put on, the Black Student Union is able to put on a month-long programming with all of these events. And I talked to many of these students, you'll hear about it in the article as well. They just love being able to showcase African-American history with that of the Stevenson community. Um, and we're just so grateful that they're able to get those spaces month-long, every single Thursday to host a variety of events that exposes the Stevenson community to different facets of African-American history and culture. On the top right, we had the Lunar New Year Celebration hosted by the Chinese National Honor Society, as well as other clubs that pitched in. They hosted food, they had networking, they brought in kids from the community. You may remember that the Chinese National Honor Society actually hosted a babysitting event for all of the faculty students a couple months ago. And so they have really been hitting the ball on just bringing younger students from the community, middle school students, elementary school students, to see what Stevenson's like. They give them little mini tours, they get food, they get to meet other high school students. It's just a great night, um, and the Lunar New Year Celebration was an absolute blast. Then lastly, on the top left, we had the Senior Showdown Event where all the seniors competed to win prom tickets. And so that is just one of those memories, right, when we have those tangible aspects that the senior class can look forward to when they become seniors, is that senior showdown. Um, it's, I like that it's placed in February. Like we said, February can kind of be a hunker down and get the work done kind of month, if you will, because there's just so much going on. But it's little moments like that, right? That showdown, the dance that really allow us to come together and have some fun along the way. So as I said, for the statesman's spotlight this month, we were covering the Black Student Union's, um, Black History Month celebrations, and so this gives us a little bit of a dive into, it gives us a little bit of a dive into all that it takes for their executive board of students to plan all of those events, as well as why they love just being able to have the Black Student Union all together. And so it's a really deep dive into everything that they've been doing, and I thought it does them justice for all the events that they put on last month. And then real quick, um, we've got the orchestra concert that'll be happening tomorrow. We've got our consortium co-curricular fair on Wednesday, which will kind of round out our consortium events for a while. The incoming freshmen did their course selection, they met with counselors and various, uh, members of the academic divisions, they've now selected their courses. And they will be coming over to see all of the co-curricular offerings that we have. So we're expecting a huge, huge turnout on Wednesday. We have spring break starting next week. I included that in there because it's something we're all looking forward to. We've got spring break, and then when we come back, we've got the advanced placement and advanced art classes, this art show, where there are, uh, students who participate in those classes are able to showcase one or two pieces of artwork with the Stevenson community and their friends and family. The National Honor Society will host its Spring Blood Drive on April eleventh. We'll expect a huge turnout for that. That money will go to a good cause. Obviously, that blood will also go to a good cause. And then we will have a couple of concerts, uh, jazz concerts to round out the middle of April. And so they will be busy practicing some of that over spring break as they enjoy their break as well. So that's all I got. I wish all of you a restful kind of week ahead, um, spring break, and thank you all for allowing me to continue these presentations. I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
All right. Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so tonight, uh, we begin, um, new business with, uh, our first item in quick inspection assessment, and that's a presentation from our Communication Arts Division. So I'll let Doug, uh, introduce his team, uh, tonight.
Absolutely. Um, we're excited. This is actually will be my last, uh, board meeting for, uh, interview of student team, so I will, uh,
uh, and so we'll, uh, do it in style, right? So we've got our tenth grade, uh, accelerated English class, and, uh, we have Kristi Lawrence, Jerry Apio, and then Brooke DeLeon and Chip Thompson here to represent that group. Take it away.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you very much for giving us some time to share a little bit of the work that we've been doing on, uh, 10AC. Specifically, Attention and Process, uh, is our focus today. So just a little bit of background about the course. Uh, there are many of us. Uh, we would outnumber this table in front of us if we were all here. We chose not to do that. And we, uh, we teach about eighty percent of, uh, sophomores that take, uh, 10AC English.
Yeah, and so, uh, sophomore year is kind of bridging that commitment to self, to commitment to others. Um, I like to explain our different inquiry questions of the many emotional stages they go through their sophomore year. All the disillusionment they kind of accept as they realize they are high schoolers, um, to balancing all of their ambitions with how they want to spend their school year with the reality of their mental health and all the other things going on. Um, and we kind of ran out the year, and we're getting ready for our last unit to talk about persistence, resilience, and grit.
Um, taking a look at the graphic, um, I would like to highlight the essential components of building student agency that we built in our classrooms. So identity, belonging, resilience, efficacy, and proficiency. And by fostering these elements into our 10AC, uh, classrooms, we recognize that we could create a space so that our students can feel valued, and they could develop confidence. And also a great way to build their curiosity, um, and gain the skills needed to take ownership of their learning and their growth. This graphic as well highlights the importance of connections, acceptance, resilience, and empathy. And again, as a team, as a team, we recognize those elements, and we try to recognize how we can help our students within our classrooms feel valued, build meaningful relationships, and develop the skills needed to navigate challenges with confidence and compassion. So having those laid out, this has led us to embed efficacy within our own curriculum.
And so we began with the concept of efficacy, which was getting a lot of traction around the building. And over time, we discovered that nobody knew what it meant. So we decided to reexamine it and determine, okay, what exactly are we trying to teach them? Because this is a measurable skill. And we realized that what made a lot more sense to the students, to their parents, to the counselors, was that we're teaching them how to pay attention to the process of their own learning. What works, what doesn't, what helps me improve, what holds me back. And so we sort of shifted our focus to this concept. And we use this terminology now to really help the students understand this isn't about, um, changing who they are, but helping them understand what works and what doesn't, what makes them successful students, and what makes them feel actually that sense of accomplishment.
Yeah, um, so just kind of reiterate, uh, this came out from all the observations that our 10AC team had about students. A lot of them were kind of struggling to understand what does it mean to be successful as an accelerated student, and also to prepare for those future AP classes and all the other challenges that they're having as a student. One of the main things that sophomores learn is balance, and especially when the, uh, with their schedule and how committed they are across our community, as we saw from that presentation. So this is just supposed to be a space where they can record and have a conversation with the teacher saying like, hey, I'm seeing these patterns. I'm not really understanding this feedback, or hey, I saw this feedback, but I'm not sure quite how to apply it. Um, and so our team has been really innovative in the different ways that we ask them to reflect, and the different ways that they can show us that communication and understanding of their skills.
So, um, how do we measure this? How do we, uh, know if this is really working? And, um, looking to the student voice survey, um, and understanding the importance of student voice and, and their response, I'd say there's a number of different areas that this overlaps, but we chose to focus, uh, one of the leads here on valuing of subject, which you could see, you know, has made a pretty big jump from the low seventies to high seventies, uh, in the last couple of years in particular. And I think this is attributed to a number of the questions that really get students and teachers engaging with conversation about how we learn. Ultimately, our success criteria is how do I read, annotate, contribute that in my small groups? How do I write in a process that isn't just me on my own, uh, doing a paper, but utilizing feedback, submitting, uh, drafting, and having that conversation with teachers, with peers, uh, and then preparing for discussion because, taking those steps to really be thoughtful about the questions and pull evidence is important. So I think this translates a bit to the, uh, the lower slide, that when we think about how students, uh, reflect on their own learning strategies, that they're thinking about how those things directly help them. If I can read more, annotate more, if I take more drafting time or prepare for discussion, um, I can see results. Uh, and so this just kind of delves into, uh, the mix of that. Of course, there's some fluctuation, but I think the consistency of seeing so many of these numbers, uh, in the mid-eighties, and again, directly addressing, how do I learn more effectively? What kind of feedback is gonna help me learn? Uh, when I get stuck, what do I do, uh, in that position? And I think students can rely on a lot of those reflective conversations, uh, that we have and keeping that learning in the forefront.
Yeah, and so while every day we're trying to teach this mindset of taking moments to reflect of where you are and taking stock of where your skills, um, are growing, we have planned basically every six weeks or so, we kind of call our attention to different conversations, activities, assignments, assessments, that we've done in those six weeks, and kind of look at the feedback that the teacher has given you, um, the practice that we've been doing in class, and also calling into attention, you know, like what's not working with our instruction? Is there something that you really like that we did before that we really need to do more of, um, to really practice those skills? Or is there, um, kind of a dissonance in the expectations of the classroom, and we need to kind of take stock of how we're working together as a community? So every six weeks, we kind of restock where we are and re-center ourselves, and I feel like this has really given students agency in the classroom and given them to control, that control, on how they have their learning experience in sophomore self.
Um, so the, uh, maybe I jumped ahead. The success criteria that I spoke about, uh, is in the top slide here, Preparation for Discussions. Independently and efficiently reading, uh, and planning and revision in writing. But the bottom kind of walks through, uh, what one of those six-week windows might look like. So as they start second semester, uh, and they are delving into Macbeth, which they acknowledge is a very challenging step, jumping from first semester, we walk them through how some of these formative assignments, uh, really aid and contribute to their learning through that process. So again, we do lots of close reading in the classroom, uh, in terms of the, the writing again, like we're, we're shifting and moving those expectations into style analysis. Uh, and then the discussions and weighing, in this case, you could see, uh, the best scenario is kind of a case study that we use to imagine, what if a high school student was trying to be, uh, student council president in a similar way of Macbeth wanting to be king? Would they rely on a positive view of that ambition in a constructive way? Or would they let fear kind of creep in and then maybe make some questionable decisions to reach that point? And then that also, uh, is matched up with some of our just skill-focused practice. So that's the soliloquy practice.
Um, so this example here is from the fall semester. Um, they're kind of comparing the before and after of their annotations. I think one of the hardest points for students is like, why should we annotate in the first place? I think one of the hardest points for students is like, why should we annotate in the first place? It slows me down. What am I even supposed to be looking for? And so what I really appreciate about this example, while it does look very traditional in how they analyze, what you really get to see with the student is in the before, they're really just summarizing what they highlighted. It was like, good, great, that's all I need to do. Whereas after, they're kind of pulling out the different ideas. You can see a little bit more of their complex inferences and their work of interpreting the text and trying to follow some sort of symbol, theme, motif, whatever is happening at that section of the book. And so for them to kind of see that growth in the way that they annotate and how that affected the way that they understood the book and explained that understanding to me in our various practices and assignments or conversations, really was kind of like that lightbulb moment for the student, like, okay, this is why I'm really focused on doing that, why you sign this all the time. So yeah, it's really nice to see the growth throughout each of those six-week windows.
And in the beginning of like a unit, we tend to like give them the annotation focus, but then as we get towards the end, they will give us the focus. They will know by that point with scaffolding, okay, what is it that I'm looking for? What do I have to annotate? And go beyond, just like Jerry said, in the early stages, they're circling the same word and then just writing it off to the side again, not efficient, right? Let's work towards these strategies. So then it all leads up to what? The essay that they're gonna write and using that information so that they could write. So then this slide right here is a digital portfolio. So some of our teachers have this digital portfolio where throughout the week, there is like either at the start of class or at the end of the class period, once a week, you go in and you include some evidence of your learning. If we're doing a Macbeth essay, for example, and you have the graphic organizer, not everybody needs it, but if that's going to serve you and that's going to help you, use it as a resource and place it in your portfolio. So there are tons of different, there's vocabulary sheets, use it. We have models that we upload in Google Classroom. Take one, look at it, and compare, maybe highlight after reading a model, what did I do that helped me improve my own paragraph or claim? So reflective moments, and again, these resources are available to them and them taking ownership, like this is what I need in order to succeed. But we hold them high, high expectations, like this is what we want. But to get there, it will look different for Rick than it will for Chip. And I think that's super important. So this example highlights a little bit of like when they walk into my class, they could have a choice if they want to take a reading check with comprehension, literal, and analytical questions. And if they do well, they could put it in their portfolio. If they don't do well, you can put your annotations in there because we are not, we are not going to penalize you. It is what works best for you. I annotated, I came prepared. These are my annotations that show my learning and that I understand what I'm reading. So it's all a way of like, this is a celebration of the great work that builds up over time.
This is one of those types of reflective questions we would do at the end of a six-week window. What would be one specific day or class activity that could describe the learning experience? Kind of similar to the way that I run some of the like Google Form reflections with my students. And here, this is a sample of Mr. Mitchum's student providing illustrated notes that they found useful in helping break down the character relationships. I know it's very, very tiny, you know, like they find their groove and their way that works. But in the very, very top, you could see that there's a color coding system. So all of this is under Act One, but the color coding is broken down by scene and the arrows are connecting relationships. And so this is just one way that the student wanted to show that they were engaging in the material by being very organized in their way of note-taking.
I want to meet that kid.
Every year you get one of these that's like, I just need to, I just need to take a picture of us. It looks like a better way of organizing than myself.
And we've been using the word conversation a lot. Obviously, it's impractical to have a one-on-one conversation with this frequency with every single student. So a lot of these conversations take place in writing. And so, for example, we'll have these kinds of questions and we're looking at the student's response. We're looking to see what they say about their own learning rather than simply trying to hope that maybe something's working. That student in Mr. Mitchum's class took the time to go through these different steps, figure out what made that process work for him. Here's a student saying that the comparing previous students' catcher body paragraphs on an essay on Catcher in the Rye to their own helped them to figure out what they needed to change. And also, it turns out, helped them curb the procrastination that they usually experience. So that kind of self-awareness is what we're really working toward. Having a student figure out, okay, here's why I'm hitting the hiccups and bumps in the road that I am hitting. So we discovered that what we were doing was only doing so much. We discussed with our team the challenges. We figured out ways to address efficacy. And one of them, as I mentioned, was to simply revise our terminology. We figured out what other classes with efficacy standards were doing because this is obviously not pertinent only to English instruction. These are skills that are transferable throughout the building. And so other divisions call it by different names, but they're looking for the same kinds of things. Applied Arts has a professionalism standard rather than an efficacy or an attention to process. It's the same basic thing, right? They're all trying to help the students be a little bit more objective about what they're doing and what leads to success versus stumbling upon it or just failing to reach it. We discussed reasonable parameters for measuring their attention to the learning process. And then we started piloting all these ways that you've seen tonight of monitoring that progress. So this is the process of working on a team of thirteen people to figure out best practice.
So our current goal stands as having students learn how to reflect on their learning, celebrate what is working, and to use the feedback to adjust their habits. I mean, I think it's, it can be as simple as you need good learning habits if you want to be a good learner. And I think we can all agree that students need to engage in the work. They need to be reflective about the work. And a lot of what we are discussing describes conversations that can happen between teacher and student or even among students themselves. Some next steps that we've considered are how can we, you know, just continue to help students appreciate the importance of that agency of taking the first step, not waiting for a teacher to say, hey, this is a scenario, or checking IRC and looking for that, wait, there's a hiccup? To create moments for students to recognize and celebrate. So again, just the continued celebration. And how we balance that, again, in terms of time, because we have lots, of course, we have to do with our reading, writing, speaking, and listening, argument, analysis, attention to process. So we want to just kind of continue to update that success criteria and involve more of that student reflection and teacher assessment.
So thank you so much for hearing us all. Any questions?
We did try to overwhelm you with info. So as to limit your ability to think of questions.
Providing wait time.
So there were, I have to admit, I did not follow a lot of what.
It worked.
It was fascinating. I really did enjoy it. One of the terms that you used, graphic organizers. I mean, there's a number of different tools you're referring to, which was interesting, and I think I could imagine what they were. What's a graphic organizer?
Do you want to take that?
Do you use them?
Yeah, of course. Well, a graphic organizer, when you have an essay that you, it could be four paragraphs, five paragraphs, the way it's set up is that they don't have to write the full essay, but it's like it organizes their ideas. So you have an introduction, you've got an attention, a hook, background, and then the claim. So it just spaces it out for your ideas to be placed in there and allows for that organization and structure to exist. But you're not writing the full on, in a blank white document. We have provided those.
And a way to visualize it, have you ever had somebody give you a printed out version of a PowerPoint presentation? It's got the slides on the left and a little block for notes on the right. It's similar to that in terms of its layout. So it will have, this is what this step involves, and then it'll have a blank space for the student to do that.
It's like a template.
So it really organizes graphically their thought process and the steps of the assignment. Because a lot of times, writing something that long is a daunting task. This makes it more manageable. The term graphic organizer is kind of like a general term for anything that Chip just said, like some kind of visual representation of whatever skill we're trying to, like a Venn diagram.
So I remember one of my first jobs, we were working on a particular project and I was overwhelmed by the number of things that we had to deal with. And I remember the partner I was working for, he said that we had to sit down and organize and write down all the steps and then try and figure out how they fit. And then the more detail we could understand and appreciate, then we could identify what the issues were and what we were missing. And in a way, you're describing that exact.
Precise.
Yeah, and it's a great way for them to come into a meeting with you so that you could sit down and then you know, okay, this is where they're headed, this is where I could help. Instead of like, I don't know where to start. And they do come in like that, too. And then you could set them up for success.
That's great.
These kids are fifteen. You had to go all the way through to twenty.
You had to go all the way through law school to figure it out. They're learning even here at fifteen, but.
It is accelerated.
Yeah, it is accelerated, yeah.
Are all the books actual books?
Okay.
Reading real books?
We've even done some surveying over the years and we determined that across the board, they prefer a physical book to anything that's on.
I do, too. I just.
There is still, the latest research, I believe, is still that reading comprehension improves with a physical text over a online.
Because they can usually notate and write in physical in the book.
Now that we spend all the money on eBooks.
Not in our division. We don't, we spend the money on the real books, so.
Use the graphic organizer for the iPad and then the books.
Yeah.
I just have to say, we've seen a lot of presentations over the years. We've been doing these for about ten years. And what is just so great about this one is that obviously the frame was around SEL. But what you guys have done is you've actually integrated that work into your daily practices of curriculum instruction assessment, grading, feedback. It's really, really impressive. Like you, we are. Troy and I may have looked at each other a couple of times thinking, oh, my God. This is, we kind of, we take it for granted how talented I think all of our teachers are in our teams, but this is just emblematic of that. It's really good. So thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so. And I suppose it's, of course it is, yeah, because of Doug's leadership.
Final hurrah.
And his final hurrah, he saved the very best for last.
They only know Kim.
Say thank you for making him look good in the last hurrah. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you all are welcome to stay.
It's better.
But before you leave, because you might not want to stay until that point, later on tonight, there will be an agenda item for personnel and the board, I think, will be excited to approve the recommendation for the next Director of Communication Arts, Ken Uslaw. And you'll have amazing teachers and teams to lead, so.
I'm so proud of them.
I'm so teary. That's so great.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was. That was really good.
That was so well done. Assessment, structure, strategy.
Okay, moving on, speaking of books, we have a first reading for textbook recommendations. Just want to point out this year, Mark, we are only bringing two. And I hesitate only because is that a typo that one is free?
Yeah, no.
In the history of woo-woo.
Yeah, we, you know, we talked about this last year and Snow brought up some questions that helped us think a little differently about how we would approach textbooks. So we went and are working with this particular textbook alongside some supplementary materials as well. So this is our core textbook, but teachers are going to be making use of supplementary materials that they've cultivated in addition to this.
So it's free. Are there actual pages in it? Like, there's stuff in it? Okay.
I think we can swing free.
Okay. Well, well done, bringing forward a free.
They'll be for future.
Okay, okay, okay.
Are they actual books?
Yeah, they're got a copy.
They're physical, actual books? We're going back to that?
Yes.
Well, this is a reference, like a reference text.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Wow. Well, feel free to bring free textbook recommendations anytime, Mark. We appreciate it. Moving on to personnel, March, as you know, is our, not just us, but for all districts in the state of Illinois, just given the way that statute is with the end of the year closely coming upon us. March is typically the big personnel month. All of this is on consent. We don't need to vote individually on any of them, but you'll see all of the personnel items, including appointment to tenure for our third and fourth-year teachers.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Where is American College of Education located? Is that an online?
Online program, really, really good one. It's one of the stronger online programs. It's really good. Appointment to third year, second year, first year, approval of administrator contracts, appointments, transfers, resignations, support staff, resignations, retirements, et cetera. All of that is there. You can peruse that at your leisure if you're interested, but it's all also included in the personnel report. So that'll be taken up in consent. We will not need an executive session following the meeting. We already had one. And that takes us to the business section, Sean, and the acceptance of the 2025 bond sale official statement.
Yep, as the board is aware, we approved the sale of some working cash bonds. We had the actual sale earlier in March, and I'll say that it went very well. We had over fifteen different bidders, which Liz Hennessy, who's our representative, said that's the most she's ever seen. And it showed in our final numbers where our true in, our all-in true interest cost is forty or four basis, forty basis points or four tenths of a percent lower than what we expected. So tonight, the board will need to approve, and I realize that I didn't put the resolution in there. But tonight, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the closing memo and the official statement for the 2025 bond sale.
Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions for Sean? Okay, Terry, could you please?
Are we ready?
Yep.
No?
Aye.
Ben Joseph?
Aye.
Tao?
Aye.
Moon's eye, Tyre?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then officially, the last part of this entire transaction, I promise, is the transfer, excuse me, the abatement of the working cash fund. When we closed this on March 11th, we now, or we closed it on the second, the sale was on the 11th. We now need to transfer the funds from the working cash fund to our operation and maintenance fund to reimburse the district for expenses that they've already incurred for capital projects. So tonight, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the resolution of bidding fourteen million, eight hundred sixty, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars from the working cash fund and subsequently transfer to the operations and maintenance fund.
Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Sean, can I ask, so it's a matter of state law that the bond proceeds. I'm sorry? Yeah, Don seconded. So it's state law, though, that the bond proceeds are deposited in the working cash fund as opposed to, is the bond an interest fund itself only for debt service and not for credit?
That's correct. Proceeds go into working cash because these were technically working cash bonds specifically. If we were to sell a bond, a building bond, for example, or an operating rate bond, then it would reflect specifically in either the ed fund or the O and M or potentially the capital projects fund. But these types of bonds were specifically working cash bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Good question.
Any other questions for Sean? Terry, could you please poll?
Ben Joseph.
I.
Tao.
I.
Moon's eye, Tyre.
I.
Frost.
I.
No.
I.
Harry's six to nothing.
Okay, and I just say membership is a yearly renewal, Sean, that'll be part of consent.
That's correct.
And then two first readings.
Yep, one is for um, the extension of our contract with Lauterbach and Amen for um, auditing services. They are the auditing firm that we've used for the last three years. Um, their contract expired with the conclusion of the fiscal year twenty-four audit. Um, we have engaged um, the finance committee uh, in return, in terms of uh, their um, satisfaction uh, with Lauterbach. And um, after some discussion, uh, we connected with uh, Matt Barron, who's the principal at Lauterbach and Amen. And um, they will be presenting us with a quote um, fairly shortly that we'll bring to the board. Um, for, uh, we're going to look at both a three-year and a five-year um, renewal to see which one ends up being better for the district. Um, but we believe it'll be well below the cost, uh, the average cost that is out on the market right now, which is fifty-seven thousand dollars um, a year. Um, and then the second one is the uh, annual um, music instrument bid. Um, that we bring to the board for replacement and or any new equipment that's needed. Um, this year though, we also will be um, taking a look at our yearbook services and bringing that to the board. Um, again in April and May, so.
And uh, I just want to, back to the audit one, thank you to Steve for, he put a lot of time in speaking to the auditors and kind of.
Yes.
There were some questions coming out of last year's audit, so thank you for really putting in the time and, and making sure that this makes sense.
Yeah, and the one thing I did forget to mention is um, we also asked about internal controls. And targeting our student activities funds, our athletic funds and so on. Um, and they will include that in the quote as well.
Not because we think there's issues.
No, but just because it's a good practice.
It's a good practice to be in to.
Yes.
Remind ourselves and for our administrators who are responsible for that, what good internal control practices are, so it's not that we have any concerns.
No, and with, we have a new athletic director coming on, we also have a new student activities director, it's important for them to understand. Um, the practices that we make them go through so that it protects the district and themselves and the money that they're in charge of.
Transparent.
They're very transparent.
Yeah, and you have your usual uh, FOIA requests.
Yep, three of them, yep, um, two we were able to complete, uh, we have one outstanding. Um, and uh, that shall be finished before the next board meeting.
That takes us to consent.
Okay, could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, um, could you please poll board?
Mm-hmm. Tao.
Here. I.
Moon's eye, Tyre.
I.
Frost.
Honey.
No.
I.
Ben Joseph.
I.
We approved.
Okay, um, few items for tonight, the first is um, some nice student profiles that Jamie and Raim included in the uh, information report. Just in case you don't get a chance to see in the Daily Digest, so thank you to you for including that information. Um, we have just an attachment that includes some important board dates. Um, so please feel free to uh, take note of those, Raim has also included those on the board calendar um, as well. Um, there's a newsletter uh, with ELC updates and information. And then uh, two other items, I think Wendy, you had an update on the mid-year report, do you want to explain to the board kind of what, what we did, what you did with that?
Yeah, so those of you who've been with us for many, many years knows that we used to have kind of a mid-year report. It's kind of status of the goals we, goals and action steps we set for our goals, projects, initiatives. And so this year, we're bringing that back in kind of abbreviated fashion. More than anything, just to hold ourselves accountable and check like, where are we with the goals that we set? What do we want to do, what do we need to um, continue to do with still time left in second semester to get those things done that we want to get done? Um, so what you have in front of you um, is from all the division directors. Just a little bit of a laundry list of sorts of things that they're proud of, things they have gotten accomplished. Some even put the things like, ooh, not there yet, but we're gonna get there. So just kind of, so you could see the progress that they're already making this year uh, according to the GPIs that we set in August and September.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, it's um, good to get back to that and we, we.
It'll get a little better each year, right?
It'll get better each year, we had been doing that, I think COVID threw us off a little bit, but. Thank you for resurrecting it. And then um, ending on a, a good note?
Um, yep, we had, we had mentioned this before, but we won the IASB award, it's a two-year award, so it was awarded last fall. Covering the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five years. And Terry and I were at the IASB annual dinner um, last week and received the plaque. And so it's a nice little, so thank you to everybody for doing, it's just basically that, you know. We're doing good work, good governance and, you know, we're checking all the boxes as far as the state is concerned, as to how we should be. As a practice. It was an interesting dinner. Mm-hmm. They mostly talked about the board, uh, federal department of, of education and what it is and what it isn't. And that nobody knew what was going on. Nor did we.
Welcome to the club.
Well, I, I mean, and this was the state board that did the presentation and they. Well, it's funny, they were presenting their future vision twenty thirty or whatever they're calling it, which is kind of the future where they want education in Illinois to go. But everything was like, well, maybe, but we don't know, and it was a lot of question marks.
It was a, it was a lovely meeting and we.
We're handling it, so we will get this plaque.
Well, congratulations.
Um, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, you're a president.
To everyone, yeah, and apparently we each get a little pin too, so I will hand those out more time.
Did they say how many?
Which you must wear to every meeting.
Everywhere you go, I think.
Every, everywhere you get to shopping, when you go to groceries.
So I'm not sure if he actually said for Jamie's benefit, it's actually a school board governance recognition award. Um, did they say how many school boards get this?
Um, I think there's like, there's a finite number within the state, I don't know what it is, but like six, I think we're presented with it.
Yeah, six out of.
In the future, we only get one plaque, so if we apply for it again, you can apply every two years. And then we'll get these little tiny magnets to go in the future. So the goal would be to fill it up, you know, then maybe they'll give us another one.
Look how efficient we are.
There's a lot of spots, I think we could go for a good ten, twelve years, yeah.
Game on.
Challenge accepted. Thank you, well, congratulations, it's well deserved, you all are fantastic.
Poetry.
All I have, oh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All on paper, alright.
Hi.
Hi.